Welcome everyone to our virtual session for parents in the public to provide feedback on high school scenarios. This particular session is for the South group of schools, which includes the five schools listed here. My name is Karen Drummond and I'm the manager of Community Engagement. We'll start this evening with some introductions and then I'll pass it to Danny Breton, Superintendent Facilities and Environmental Services for some opening remarks. In all of these sessions, we're pleased to have members of our Board of Trustees in attendance to hear your perspectives on the high school scenarios. Here with us tonight, we have trustees Mike Bradshaw and Julie Hurd-Lica. Welcome to you. As well, we have members of Superintendent's team here with us at these sessions. As decision makers, they all take an active interest in understanding what's on the minds of all the participants in this initiative: parents, students, staff, and community members. I'm pleased to introduce the team to you: Chris Lucy, Joanne Pittman, Darlene Anru, Danny Breton, Brad Grundy, Rob Armstrong, Kellyanne Fenny, and Marla Martin Esposito. We have several education directors here with us this evening. Some are part of our High School Engagement Planning Team and some represent the schools we are discussing this evening. I'm happy to introduce Ann Hart, Calvin Davies, Michelle Howell, Teresa Martin, Mike Nelson, and Martine Poyet. We also have Directors Latosia Campbell-Walters and Keith Johnson, Principals Tony Barrio, Sherry Goodfellow, Joe Sturgeon, Gary Tink, and Darren Whitbread. We also have members of the High School Engagement Planning Team, Connor McGreech, Deb Hamilton, and a new member of the team, Adele Louter. You will hear from some of these subject matter experts here this evening and some you may not. That said, all our education directors, high school principals, and high school engagement planning team members have played an active and important role in this work. Now I'd like to ask Danny Breton, Superintendent of Facilities and Environmental Services, to share some opening remarks with us this evening. And just give me a moment, Danny, to queue you up. Go ahead, Danny.
Thank you very much, Karen, and thank all of you for joining us here tonight, taking time out of your busy lives for this virtual session intended to discuss the high school scenarios. Without a doubt, the best decisions are those that are made after hearing the thoughts and perspectives of those who may be affected. And certainly there's no doubt that high school is an important time in any student's journey of learning. So we're really pleased to connect with you today about the future of our high schools. The purpose of this session is to share information with you about the two high school scenarios and then more importantly, allow you to ask questions and share comments about the scenarios overall, as well as the five schools that we're focusing on this evening. I'd like to also emphasize that student learning and student success, this for students across the city, is at the heart of any decision that we make at the CBE. In fact, the entire reason we're undertaking this effort is to balance enrollment across all CBE high schools. This to maximize student access, flexibility, and choice no matter where they live. Some of the changes proposed within the scenarios represent significant changes for some schools and some communities. However, our approach allocates resources where they will have the most positive impact for students overall. Both scenarios provide quality learning opportunities that will allow students to meet the requirements to complete high school. And with that said, each of you likely have a preference for one scenario or another. And this is your chance to express that. We encourage you to share your feedback with us so that we can consider it in decision making. That's what this phase of engagement process is all about. And so with that, I'll hand it back over to Karen.
Thanks, Danny. Just to give you a sense of what we plan to cover here this evening, this is what our agenda looks like. We've already covered the introductions and opening remarks. And next, we'll explain how we're approaching questions at this session. Then we'll touch on a few key aspects of this initiative overall before we delve into more of the details. In addition to talking about the scenarios overall, we'll also spend some time on each of the five schools in this group. We'll provide time for questions and answers at multiple points in the presentation and then close our session by talking about next steps. We will open up the question and answer window closer to our first Q and A time. This will show up on the right-hand side of your screen. How this will work is that you can type your question in here. We won't be providing written responses during the meeting as we want to ensure that we don't distract from the presentation. However, we have several subject matter experts here this evening to answer your questions verbally. We would just ask that you don't get too far ahead in typing your questions. For example, if you have a question about a specific school, then please wait until we've presented the information about the school before you type in your question. We will pause at several points to take questions. The first opportunity will be after we've talked about scenarios overall. Then we'll pause after speaking about each school to take some questions. If we still have time after that, then we may be able to still answer some of the general questions that you have about the scenarios. We will have someone moderating comments and questions. We welcome all comments and feedback, but it's important that comments and questions be shared in a respectful way. We will answer the questions submitted on the idea board in advance of this session first and then move on to others. In the interest of time, we may also have to paraphrase questions raised on the idea boards or in the Q and A window for the session. Also, please keep in mind that we won't be publishing comments in the Q and A window. We will just publish questions to be answered. If a question has already been answered or will be addressed in the presentation, it also won't be published. That said, we will have all comments and questions documented and recorded as exactly as written and all will be reviewed and considered in decision making. Entering it once is enough. Any comments or questions not covered in our session tonight can be provided on the idea boards available on our website. And I just want to clarify about this. These are idea boards which are different from the ones where you could submit questions in advance of session. So we have eight idea boards organized by program and by geographical groupings where you can share any comments that you want to share with decision makers about these two scenarios. And also this evening, please keep in mind that we have a lot to cover in our session, including discussing five schools. So it's really important that we balance airtime fairly. There were some questions submitted for this session about maps and designations for communities. As we have a lot of content to cover in talking about programs of five schools, we are not able to answer questions that are specific to individual situations. That information is available in our story map and you're welcome to review that. We also had a question that was asked about enrollment data for 2019 and 2020. So I also want to note that this information is available in the projections in the story map and the principal PDFs that we have made available on our website. So feel free to review that information as you have time. Questions have arisen during this phase of engagement about the process itself. So I wanted to let people know that all community engagement initiatives at the CBE are guided by our framework for community engagement called Dialogue. This framework demonstrates our commitment to engage with parents, students, staff, and community members in a way that is accountable, honest, inclusive, responsive, and demonstrates mutual respect. Also, in May 2019, when we launched this engagement process, we shared a detailed engagement plan or roadmap. And it has been updated a few times since that time. This document answers all those questions about who will make the decision and what will be considered in decision making, what's in scope and out of scope, and more. So it was developed considering feedback provided by our High School Engagement Advisory Group, which includes student, parent, staff, and trustee representatives. So if you have any questions about these things and haven't reviewed this plan, I encourage you to have a read through the most recent version of the roadmap updated last month. Just to remind everyone what this engagement is all about, we aim to balance enrollment at our schools in a way that maintains access, flexibility, and choice for students and considers available space and resources. I want to emphasize that in doing this, we need to consider what is best for student learning overall. We are still on track to implement any changes for the 2022-23 school year as indicated at the outset of this project. This timeline gives you a snapshot of the overall timing and the points at which you can share your thoughts and perspectives, which are highlighted in blue. You can see that after this phase, there will be another opportunity for feedback before a decision is made. The exact timing of when the proposed plan is shared for feedback will depend on the work required to develop it. We won't have a full understanding of this until we have reviewed all of the feedback on the scenarios. So this will take place in June or September with a final decision to be communicated no later than December. There were a wide range of perspectives expressed in the input provided in fall 2019. But there was also common ground. These were the common themes that emerged. First, maintaining current grade configurations. Then, one of the strongest themes was about the importance of offering a strong regular program and having consistency and quality across high schools. This was very important to parents. There was also recognition about how proximity, travel time, and transportation logistics can have a significant impact for students and families. And now I will pass it over to Teresa to talk more about what both scenarios provide and how they differ from one another. Just give me a moment, Teresa, to queue you up. Go ahead.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening. Both scenarios provide quality learning opportunities that allow students to meet the requirements to complete high school. They do this in three key ways: by providing a more equitable learning experience for all high school students; by maintaining a regular program at every high school; and by allowing for alternative programs and academic enrichment when criteria are met. It was important to have criteria that would guide decisions made about alternative programs and academic enrichment. Equity, sustainability, and the learning experience offered by program were all important considerations. When we look at both scenarios, both scenarios help to address the objective of this engagement by balancing out utilization across our high schools. If no changes were made, we would expect to have only 30% of our schools in the balanced utilization range. With both scenarios we are presenting to you, we are able to improve that significantly to have 71% of the schools in the balanced utilization range. When our schools are closer to the balanced range, students are able to have a better learning experience as we are able to avoid overcrowding and limitations on scheduling of classes. This is very important in providing the best opportunities possible for our students into the future. This is an interesting diagram. This graphic provides you with a view of enrollment in the different high school programs within the CBE. 90% of our students are in the regular program at high school. The remaining 10% are distributed across French Immersion (6%), IB (2%), Spanish Bilingual (1%), and Art-Centered Learning (1%). It's important for us all to remember that when we make decisions to balance enrollment at CBE high schools, these decisions are made for the full student population across all these programs and consider what is best in their learning overall. So when you look at this diagram, that graphic is really important to look at. When you look at the enrollment, 1 out of every 100 students are in ACL. 1 out of every 100 students are in Spanish Bilingual. 2 out of every 100 are in full IB. 6 out of 100 are in French Immersion. So that means 90%, 90 out of 100 of our students are attending in our regular programs. We need to keep this in mind as we progress through this engagement. Let's take a look at the scenarios. Both scenarios include some consolidation of high school programs. Scenario B provides a greater degree of consolidation than Scenario A: Regular Program. The scenarios do propose some communities be re-designated to different high schools than they currently attend. However, 4 out of 5 students in the regular program will continue to be designated to the same high school in both scenarios. In Scenario B, more students would be closer to home than in Scenario A. IB Locations. Both scenarios propose reducing from 5 locations down to 4 locations. 3 of the locations are in the same, sorry, are the same in both scenarios with the fourth location changing. Lester B Pearson for one scenario and John G Deefenbaker in the other. French Immersion. For French Immersion, we are providing two possibilities. In Scenario A, we are proposing that we continue to have four locations, but we make a change to location from Lester B Pearson to Robert Thirsk. In Scenario B, we are proposing some consolidation to three locations in order to gain efficiencies. The thinking here was to maintain the program at current locations where student enrollment numbers are high enough for a robust program. Spanish Bilingual. We are proposing, we consolidate from two locations down to one location in Scenario A. Crescent Heights is a more central location for the program when consolidated to one site than either Dr. E.P. Scarlett or William Aberhart. The location also helps balance out enrollment among high schools. In Scenario B, we are proposing that the Spanish Bilingual program is discontinued at high school. Students who have attended a Spanish Bilingual K-9 program and wish to receive Spanish language credentialing may do so through the, sorry, may do so through the IB language program components offered at Henry Wiswood, John G Deefenbaker, Sir Winston Churchill, and Western Canada, or make arrangements to complete the appropriate DELA exam with the DELA organization. Art-Centered Learning. In both scenarios, the program is eliminated at the high school level. Just to be clear, there isn't another program replacing Art-Centered Learning. High school programming has evolved since the inception of the ACL program. Students in the regular program now have greater flexibility and more opportunity to incorporate arts within their courses in the high school level. French IB. This specialized program may not be sustainable into the future considering costs and student enrollment. We have provided one scenario where it continues and one where it does not. Phasing Out. When we say phasing out, we mean that students are able to complete the program at the same location where they have started. In the two scenarios, we propose phasing out programs whenever we have the resources to allow for it. This is possible for IB, French IB, and Spanish if there are at least 25 students per grade enrolled. So if the 25 student per grade minimum is not met, students can take the program at the school they are designated to for the program or they can attend their designated high school for the regular program. If students want to take another program or sequence of courses at another school, they would need to follow the regular high school transfer process. Phasing Out is possible for Art-Centered Learning regardless of the number of students. Phasing Out may not be possible for French Immersion at Lester B Pearson. So in that situation, students would be re-designated to the new location starting in September 2022. When it comes to the regular program and community re-designations, students attending a school in the 2021-22 school year will be able to complete high school at that same high school. Phasing Out will not be provided for siblings attending other schools. Regular Program. If with these changes, students might be moving from alternative program into a regular program in the future, it's important to know that all CBE students have designated schools for the regular program that they are able to attend. If students want to attend a school other than the school they are designated to for the regular program for IB or another sequence of courses, you need to, they need to follow the high school transfer process and details are available on our website. Now, I would like to pass it over to Martine Poyet to continue with the slides relating to Spanish Bilingual. Thank you.
Bonsoir. There were several questions submitted about the Spanish Bilingual program. The information in the next couple of slides address those. It's important to recognize the fact that the trends over time showed us that many students who take the Spanish Bilingual program from kindergarten to grade 9 make different choices for high schools. And this is resulting in low enrollment in the program compared to other programs such as French Immersion. With this low enrollment, it's not sustainable to continue offering the program in two locations. In proposing one location for high school, for high school students across the city, it is important that the location be somewhat central. When we have a lower number of students in an alternative program at school that also offer the regular program, there can be inequities among students in the building. For example, the class size for students in the alternative program may be smaller than the students in the regular program. With a more consolidated approach, we can provide a more equitable learning and class size experience for all students regardless of their program. Both scenarios provide opportunities for students to pursue Spanish, pursue Spanish language acquisition. In Scenario A, the program continues at Crescent Heights High School. In Scenario B, there are other ways students can attain Spanish language proficiency through IB language courses or Spanish language and culture course. Students who have attended a Spanish Bilingual program and wish to receive Spanish language credentialing may choose to go through the IB program. So I'll speak a bit about that. So under Scenario B, some of the question were how many IB classes would the students have to take each year if they want to continue advanced Spanish classes in grade 10 or 12? Is it just one IB Spanish class per year or more? Would Spanish students have to take IB exam? So students who register have two options when they register for the IB program. In addition to completing the Alberta Education Program, they can take the partial or full IB program. There are IB exam, but these take place at the end of the program in grade 12. For Spanish IB high-level courses, students will receive university credential if they are successful. In partial IB, students take two or more IB courses. They also complete Theory of Knowledge and the CAS program regarding creativity, activity, and service. In full IB, students carry a full program of IB courses. They also complete an extended essay, Theory of Knowledge course, and the CAS program. Spanish IB is one of the course they can choose at Henry Wiswood, Western Canada, John G Deefenbaker, and Sir Winston Churchill. For an example of IB timetable, please go to the school website and look at the IB section. We have to say that the students though will not be eligible for the International Spanish Academy Certificate in Scenario B. Now I'd like to ask Superintendent Danny Breton to share a bit more information about the proposal, the proposed location and transportation for the Spanish Bilingual program in Scenario B. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martine. Let me just find my notes. Right, so as was just mentioned by Martine, it is not sustainable to continue offering the Spanish Bilingual program in two locations. With the proposal of one location for the program, some of you had questions about the location and transportation. So we wanted to provide some of this information right up front. So first of all, as indicated on the slide, travel guidelines that we have in place apply to students attending their designated regular program school. So they don't apply to alternative programs. The reason that is, is that the ability to offer an alternative program under the Education Act is a flexibility that's granted by the government to school jurisdictions only when there is space and resources available. And so we're not specifically funded for those. So for some students, the travel would be significant due to the distance traveled to a single-site alternative program. That unfortunately is consistent with many of our other single-site or small number of site alternative programs where when you're making that choice, the student does have to travel a longer distance because it's not available in other schools. However, in saying that, the program location Crescent Heights under Scenario A was selected along the max orange line specifically to help enhance access. And in the future, it is projected to be within walking distance of the green line. Of course, no indication as to when that might come online, but then that would just further enhance accessibility. In past transportation engagements, we have heard from families that transportation supports need to focus on the youngest. And so within the CBE, we provide yellow school busing for elementary school age students. And then as we transition into the middle school years and then high school most certainly, the method of transportation is Calgary Transit. In addition to that piece of information, it's also important to recognize the fact that the Board of Trustees has asked us to balance our transportation services within the government transportation grant and any user fees that we collect. And in fact, even the minister's order, most recently this past year, directed us to provide bus service only where it's required. Now, why is that? Again, it's because of how, when we, especially with an alternative program, when we offer a program like that, it's only where resources are available. If we have to tap into the global budget in order to subsidize transportation, that means then that there's less money to support schools and for schools to be operated. So with that having been said, I'd now like to hand it over to Michelle Howell in regards to some information around the Arts-Centered Learning Program.
Thank you so much, Danny. So I want to talk a little bit tonight around our Arts-Centered Learning Program. And for those of you who are not familiar, the Arts-Centered Learning Program teaches the core curriculum through an exploration of the arts. So the intent of the program is not for students to become artists or musicians. For those students who are interested in fine and performing arts programming, all of our high schools currently offer options such as music, dance, drama, visual arts, and other art courses as part of the regular program. The Arts-Centered Learning Program in both scenarios is being discontinued for three reasons primarily. The first one is focused on the low projected enrollment in the program. And Martine talked about this a little bit earlier around some of the impacts of low enrollment and how this looks and feels in a school. So specifically, around the focus around class sizes as a whole, there's certainly an impact. But there's also an ability to create classes for students in the program when we're thinking about creating spaces based on the numbers of students. In the case of Lord Beaverbrook High School, which has the ACL program, some of the classes currently some of the classes currently are blended with regular program students to support those balanced classes in the current model. The second reason for this being discontinued is certainly for the need for additional space for students into the future. And we'll have Connor speak about that in the next few slides. And lastly, high school programming has certainly evolved since the ACL program was first introduced. So students in the regular program certainly now have greater flexibility and more opportunity to incorporate the arts within their other courses. So an example of how programming has evolved over time has been how teachers who are currently teaching those blended classes now at Lord Beaverbrook are able to support both programs, the ACL and regular program, within those same classes. Because since the redesign of high school and the thinking of how we support students and personalized learning, that has been a great success for us. I think we're just going to move on to the next slide. And I think we're just going to take a little bit of a pause here. And we are going to ask Deb to take us through a few questions. And we'll take some time to answer those. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So some questions were submitted through the virtual session idea boards and many of them have been answered in some of the slides previous, and we have a couple more. First one is for Martine. And we are paraphrasing for, in the interest of time. The Spanish bilingual program is equivalent to an option class. What is the comparison number of students in each option class? My daughter's Spanish classes have been just at least as full as AP or other options.
Good evening again. So first on the premise, so no, the Spanish bilingual program combines a core subject and option classes. For example, the Spanish language art is a core classes. In this case, for example, at Dr. E.P. Scarlett, this year they needed to combine the grade 10 and grade 11 students together in a class to make it at a reasonable size. And even at that point, it was still smaller than the majority of regular core subject classes. The combining the two programs together in one location will allow for a more optimal offering of classes, and we can even look at expanding the offering to increase the quality of the Spanish bilingual program. Hope this helps. Thank you.
Thank you, Martine. The next question is for Darlene. Has the CBE looked into the ripple effect of canceling Spanish in high school? It will impact enrollment in the lower grades as parents won't want to start a program they know their kids can't finish. Darlene?
Thank you, Deb. So we recognize that the proposed changes for the Spanish bilingual program could affect the choices that families make into the future, and we are prepared for that. As it stands now, many of our K9 Spanish bilingual students make other choices and do not continue with the program in high school. And that is a key reason changes are being proposed for this program in these scenarios. In addition, we have several successful and certainly well-attended alternative programs that end either in grade six or grade nine, including the Traditional Learning Center Program, Science Program, Mandarin Bilingual Program, the All Boys, All Girls, German Bilingual, and Montessori Program.
Thank you, Darlene. And so now we'll turn our attention to the live Q and A from this evening. And the first question, hearing a blend of scenarios is a possibility. What does that look like for the Spanish bilingual program? And Martine?
I think that's more of a planning committee question.
Okay. Connor or Danny, please?
Hi, everybody. I'm Connor McReach with Planner. And so the question again was, hearing a blend of scenarios is a possibility. What does that look like for the Spanish bilingual program? Now, this was something Karen addressed earlier on in the presentation, and that we would look at the feedback, we take that feedback back to the planning committee, and we would see what would be possible if there was such a, you know, if a scenario C was to come forward and what that might look like. And what Karen mentioned was there would be, it would take elements that were already present in scenario A or scenario B. We wouldn't be seeing any new elements added in a potential scenario C. So what would it look like exactly for the Spanish bilingual program? Well, we don't know yet. So any potential scenario C would be evaluated after we get a chance to review all the feedback.
Connor, if I could keep you on, just to be clear, Spanish bilingual will either be at Crescent Heights High School or discontinued. So blending Spanish bilingual, blending the two scenarios for one specific program, just as it wouldn't be possible for one community to blend a program, blending is for different communities and different programs. Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I think the next question might be for you as well, Connor. The speaker said that student cohorts need to be large enough. However, at previous sessions, folks have said some of the IB cohorts are very small, less than 30 kids. Why are these continuing without assessment, for example, career IB, while the entire Spanish bilingual program could be canceled in scenario B?
That one actually might be a better question for an educator when talking to cohorts and class sizes and things like that. So I might have to pass that one along to one of my colleagues.
Okay. Michelle?
Sure, I think what I would, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding the question. But we're talking about student cohorts needing to be large enough, and I think that's actually the big purpose about why we're looking around IB programs and where they're currently placed. And in looking at the scenarios and the number of sites that we have currently, from moving from five sites to four, what actually happens is that we're looking at creating bigger cohorts for IB classes exactly for that reason, because to have small cohorts is challenging. It's challenging because you want to be able to maintain a large number of choices for students. And in order to have those choices, you need to be able to fill those classes to make sure that they are reasonable. And that's also a component of the IB program. And in addition to the importance of congregating those sites into four sites, what would happen is that our IB program would be able to think more about how we're using resources efficiently. So I'm just trying to make sure that I've got the answer to the question. So I'm thinking actually, based on these scenarios, what's happening is that our class sizes would become a little bit more reasonable and manageable as we're moving forward.
Thanks, Michelle. So the next question, I believe that Darlene has addressed this question. I'll read it out, and Darlene, if you have anything further to add, please turn your camera on. When you talk about making responsible decisions about resources, how do you plan on keeping the three schools in the southwest open if the Spanish bilingual program moves? It effectively removes the earlier schools. Darlene?
Thanks, Deb. And so as I mentioned in my previous response to the question, we have had increasing success with our alternative programs up to the grade six level or the grade nine level. When we had one of our alternative programs extend to the grade 12 level, and I'm referring to the Traditional Learning Center program, the same question was posed by the parents. You'll see a significant decrease in registration in the TLC program, and in fact, it had the opposite effect. We've had an increase in that program and have continued to expand locations following the closure of the high school component. So to tell you that that will happen for Spanish, no one can guarantee that. But we have not noticed that when we have eliminated at a high school level, it has negatively impacted the numbers at the elementary or middle school levels. Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene. And the next question, can you explain why the Spanish program is not sustainable in two locations? Martine had addressed that in a couple of the slides. There's a couple of questions about projections and enrollment numbers, and we encourage you to visit the Story Map for that information. The next story, the next question is around, I think it's around that blending piece again. Scenario B looks to be a better option for a larger number of students in schools with students closer to a regular program and better overall numbers. But is there any way that the Spanish bilingual program is kept at Crescent Heights in scenario B? So Connor, if you wouldn't mind speaking to that with regards to the blending piece?
Hi. So the question again was around, can, could Spanish bilingual be housed at Crescent Heights in scenario B? So, you know, it would be challenging because in scenario B for Crescent Heights, we have a number of new communities being added into the school from the northeast. So Citiescape, Redstone, Skaggy Ranch are being re-designated to the school in that scenario, which end up taking up most of the space in Crescent Heights. So we need to take a very close look at usability of space at Crescent Heights High School before we can make that determination.
Thanks, Connor. And the next question was posted at 6:42, and it is about the AP program. AP programs are unchanged in either scenario. How many students make up these classes? Michelle, can you take this one?
Yeah, no problem. So the piece around APs is highly dependent on each school. So AP is a program that's a little bit different than IB where it can be, where it's actually offered by course. And in every high school, what a principal does is base those AP offerings on the requests from students. So it's highly dependent on the school, on the context of the school, on the requests from students, the staffing. So there's a lot of elements that are part of AP. And again, because it's that individual-based course, a school can offer one AP course or several, just again, depending on the number of requests from students. So it's a hard one to answer as a baseline for all schools. But in terms of AP classes, again, schools manage this in different ways. In some cases, if there is a smaller number of AP students, an AP class could be blended in some cases. Other cases, AP classes need to be uniquely their own AP class. Again, it's very dependent on what the course is and the school. That's a little bit of a general answer, but that's the reason behind it.
Thanks, Michelle. The next question was at 6:43 PM from Maria. For the survey, as a parent of a Spanish bilingual student, do I fill out for Crescent Heights or their community designated school? Maria, what I would recommend to you is if your child would be attending Dr. E.P. Scarlett, should everything remain the same, I would fill it out for Dr. E.P. Scarlett as there's an additional Spanish question on that, for that school. So now I'm going to a question at 6:44. When IB programs and Spanish programs are cut, will the remaining schools hire the displaced teachers? For example, if Deef or Pearson loses their IB program, will those teachers move to schools like Wisewood? Same for Spanish teachers to Crescent? Darlene, could you field this one?
Thanks, Deb. So when we're looking at consolidating any of our programs, we work with human resources who collect the skill set of those teachers. And then every spring, just as we're getting ready right now, principals are in the position of redeploying their staff and making decisions on the needs of their school. So while a teacher with a specific skill set may not be needed at one school, they will and could be very well needed to support a program in another school. So that was the long answer, and the short answer is yes, these teachers are picked up.
Thanks, Darlene. And the next question, will AP be at any of these schools you are discussing this evening? AP is offered at all high schools that do not offer IB except for Jack James. So in this grouping, Henry Wisewood has IB, so all of the other schools would have AP. Michelle, did I get that right?
Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So moving on to the next question. Danny, I think this one will be for you. It's at 6:45. Have you considered modularized classrooms to resolve temporary enrollment problems from year to year? Bring the classrooms to where the students live instead of moving the students to where the classrooms are?
Yes, certainly something that we did consider, but ultimately was ruled out, and there are several reasons for that. First of all, installing modular classrooms would do nothing for those schools that are underutilized. So again, remember, there's a there's an issue going on within the city where we have schools that are too full, and we have schools that are not full enough. And so that is impacting access, flexibility, and choice for those students. And so we need to be looking at seeing how we can provide those opportunities for those students as well. In addition to that, modular classrooms cost a lot of money, several hundred thousand dollars each for the purchase and the installation. That is something that is controlled by the Ministry of Education. So it'd be dependent upon their approvals, something that we couldn't guarantee out of this engagement that we would be able to do. Something that's not necessarily doable on every one of our high school sites. And because of the high cost, you can certainly imagine that the province, but I would expect, of course, every taxpayer, especially during these particularly difficult economic times to look at maximizing the space that we already have. So we know that we have enough space within all of our high schools if we balance enrollment. And that would avoid having to expend millions of dollars required to install modular classrooms at those schools that are currently oversubscribed. And like I've indicated, of course, do nothing, and so doing for those schools that are undersubscribed.
Thanks, Danny. And I am going to go to a question that was posted at 6:49. What is the impact to the CSB of students, maybe that's the CBE, of students leaving the public system for private and charter school programs?
If you want, Deb, I could maybe speak to that one.
Sure.
So this is certainly something that we do monitor is to see to what degree CBE schools are an attractive solution for parents, an attractive option for parents to send their kids. And typically what we see in terms of our retention of students really is attached very closely to the economic circumstances within the province. And so when the economy is really strong in Alberta, we see a larger proportion of individuals moving into private schools. And I would imagine, you know, part of that, of course, is the And I would imagine, you know, part of that, of course, is the fact that families are maybe more financially able to, to select that as an option. And then when we see the economy turn down, then we typically see a greater influx of students into CBE schools. Having said that, opening new schools is also something that we can say also attracts students into the Calgary Board of Education. And so when we have that opportunity, and over the last five years, we've opened almost 30 schools, and that has attracted students back into the, the public system because suddenly students had a school in their backyard, in their community, that they could attend very easily. So that's sort of the, the ebb and flows that we see within the Alberta context.
Thanks, Dani. And at 6:48, a question was asked about online Spanish option. It was mentioned in one of the slides that there may be an option for some online Spanish option. What could that look like? Is Joe on this call? Or would this be Darlene?
We're just experiencing some technical difficulties at this end, Deb, but we'll be right there.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
My apologies. My screen reconfigured entirely. In relation to the possibility of the offering of specific online courses to Spanish, one of the elements, of course, we've had a significant year of learning as it relates to our ability to deliver online programming in specific programs and pathways. It is something that we are continuing to explore as a way of making courses available. I cannot confirm entirely as there is, there are other implications as a relation, as it relates to that. However, it is something that we are actively exploring specific to a range of courses in high schools, knowing that they can't always be available in every high school, which increases our equity of access.
Thanks, Joe. And the next question was at 6:52. This is an engagement question, so this will be for you, Karen. In reading through the initial engagement feedback, many suggestions noted the idea of moving French from Scarlet, but most specifically said, don't move Spanish as it is a full community program. How does this honor any of the engagement that occurred? Karen, you're on mute.
Sorry. I think there was a range of feedback that we heard in fall 2019. So I know there was a question submitted along these lines on one of the idea boards, the idea board for this session. And so I know that question pointed out the online survey results and indicating that more than half of people indicated that they would prefer to remove or to move the regular program rather than alternative programs. However, it was quite, it was a difference in comments. There was 87 mentions about re-designating regular programs and 86 mentions about re-designating alternative programs. However, it's important to note that in those mentions, some of those comments are in favor of keeping those programs within the school. And it's also important to note that the Spanish bilingual program responses, there was an over, the overrepresentation of families in that program compared to other programs and considering the population of students in that program. So that's really important to consider when you look at the feedback that was provided. And it's also important to remember that the feedback that's provided is just one of the things that's looked at in decision-making. So we also consider available space and resources across schools, sustainability, student enrollment numbers in programs, and providing equitable learning experiences for all students. So that all needs to be considered when, when decisions are made. The feedback is one of the things, but all of those things need to be considered. And when we look at all of that, it is challenging to continue offering Spanish bilingual in two locations, given the low enrollment numbers. And I think that's been expressed already. And so that's why we see it being suggested that the Spanish bilingual program move out of Dr. EP Scarlet.
Thanks, Karen. And so in the interest of time, we will need to move on to more of the planning information and school information.
All right. So that's back to me. So we'll talk a little bit about utilization and what is it? And why are we talking about it? And why are you seeing it on the story map? So utilization is a way the province of Alberta measures how full schools, capacity and utilization rates contribute to planning decisions such as modular classroom allocations and capital project approvals. It's also used when calculating the operation and maintenance grants for school authorities for operation, maintenance, and security of all school buildings. So weighted utilization is a calculation of the weighted enrollment divided by the provincial capacity. In the broadest sense, the calculation takes the square meters of the school and converts it into a capacity. Regular classrooms, CTS spaces, et cetera, are all taken into account in this calculation. The provincial capacity is provided to us from the province, and it excludes any exemptions for leases. This is updated yearly and would reflect changes at the school over the previous year. Now, weighted enrollment is used to give a higher weighting to students with complex learning needs. These students are counted as using three times a space in a building. This is why you might have a utilization of 100% or higher. But when you're looking at the projection and you're looking at those, those stat columns, they're not reaching that capacity line, but it's saying it's over 100% utilization. So future utilization rates are estimated based on the past, past proportion of complex learners. So this is even more pronounced in some of our schools. Some of our schools tend to have a higher proportion of complex learners than others. This difference between schools is generally tied back to system classes that we, that would have a high proportion of these students. Some schools may have 10% of the population as complex learners, whereas other schools might only have 2% of its population. So next, I'll talk briefly about our enrollment projections and maps. So planning projections use the items listed on the slide to conform our individual school projections. To give an example, when a new and developing community is designated to a school, there may be a time that that community may come to outgrow the space in that school. So planning uses these factors to help us determine when this will happen. On the flip side, it also helps us track when a school is facing declining enrollment and can be used to determine when and how large a community we might be able to re-designate to that school to bolster the enrollment or relieve another school that is at capacity either through re-designation or overflow. We use what's called the cohort survival methodology to age a population within a school and determine how many students will be there in future years. In the most simple terms, we look at how many students were in grade 10 in 2020 to calculate how many students will be there in grade 11 in 2021. We then take into account the above-mentioned factors to help us determine how a population might grow or shrink year over year. Now we'll start on the school by school slides. Centennial School has been, has seen decreasing enrollment in recent years. The number of students coming from the communities it currently serves has been decreasing. This is an opportunity to designate other close by communities to the school. The communities of Belmont, Silverado, and Yorkville are being designated in scenario A. These communities will ensure Centennial is positioned to be well utilized into the future as one of our most southern schools in Calgary. Another about Pine Creek. Since we began this phase of the engagement, we have learned that Pine Creek will, it was not approved to be part of the CD jurisdiction. In an effort to remain consistent, it seemed prudent to not remove or change the projections in the middle of this portion of the engagement. So a long-term implication for Centennial High School in this scenario would mean a slight, very slight decrease in utilization long-term. That's just because Pine Creek is a brand-new community and there's not many people living there yet. Scenario B for Centennial. So in this scenario, we are just, we're changing the, the community or communities that are going into Centennial. So because while the community is larger and further along this development and lifecycle as a community, it is the only community we're re-designating to Centennial in scenario B. So now we'll take any questions you might have specific to Centennial, scenario A and B. I'm back over to Deb.
Thanks, Connor. And we'll just pause for a moment if there's any questions coming in about Centennial. Nope. Connor, I guess we can move on to the next school.
Our next school we'll talk about this evening is Dr. EP Scarlet. Dr. EP Scarlet is facing increasing pressures from three different programs, regular program, French immersion, and Spanish bilingual. So we're making a number of changes at Dr. EP Scarlet School for, starting with changes in the regular program. This includes re-designating Belmont, Silverado, and Yorkville, as well as Woodlands and Woodbine would be designated only to Henry Wisewood School into the future. Dr. EP Scarlet will remain the only French immersion program in the South, and Spanish bilingual programming will be consolidated to a single location at Crescent High School. In scenario B, it's similar outcomes for Scarlet in that, again, instead of Belmont, Silverado, and Yorkville, Walden will be re-designated out of Dr. EP Scarlet to Centennial High School in scenario B. And Woodlands and Woodbine will continue to be designated solely to Henry Wisewood. Spanish bilingual programming will be discontinued at Dr. EP Scarlet School. As mentioned previously, all these students who are in the school at the time of the designation change would be able to remain to finish grade 12. Now, we'll move on to some questions, and I'll answer the first question here before passing it back to Deb. So the first question was, why is Dr. EP Scarlet the only designation for Southwood Community in the scenarios when it looks like Dr. EP Scarlet will be overcapacity in most scenarios? So I appreciate the idea from the idea board, and it is a good suggestion. Southwood is adjacent to Henry Wisewood boundary, so it could logically be designated there as well. The reason it wasn't considered is that Southwood is even closer in proximity to Dr. EP Scarlet School. In fact, the entire community of Southwood is located inside the WACH zone for Scarlet. So, and we would not look at a dual designation either at this time. So I'll pass it back to you, Deb.
Thanks, Connor. And so the second question on the slide Karen has addressed already. So we'll move into the live Q and A. And the first question at 7:03. Since Lord Beaverbrook is under capacity, why not move the French program to there and keep Spanish program in EPS? We believe Karen touched on this as well with regards to the low enrollment in Spanish bilingual. Connor, did you have anything to add for this question?
The only thing I would add, Deb, is that Lord Beaverbrook, the space at Lord Beaverbrook is accommodating many changes as a result of capacity concerns at John Cardinal Schubert High School. So we're seeing many students moving from the southeast back into Lord Beaverbrook High School, which would limit the ability for them to accommodate French immersion into the future.
Thanks, Connor. And the next question was also posted at 7:03. This is regarding transportation. Class sizes in grade 10 and 11 at EP Scarlet right now are smaller due to the busing changes to middle school that took place a few years back, which reduced enrollment for a period. We are seeing more students joining the program again at now two elementary schools feeding the higher grades. Can you discuss the projection of students based on these new students? Oh, I'm sorry, it's not, there was some transportation in there, but Connor, I think this is a projection question.
Thanks, Deb. So there's been a lot of questions, I've noticed. I've been monitoring the Q and As, and a lot of questions are on the projection. You know, we opened new sites in, in the south, and they're really growing with students. And so I'll take a few minutes now to just discuss the historical enrollment for Spanish bilingual and what intake has been like at those lower grades. So Spanish bilingual has been growing quite steadily up until about 2014 and 2015. So as the program expanded, it started way back prior to 2005. So that program was growing out year over year. We expanded, we opened new locations in the south. Those programs grew out and it expanded out into Dr. EP Scarlet. And it was about then, 2015, when enrollment in Spanish bilingual stopped increasing. Enrollment has been flat for the last five or six years, decreasing in some years even, or increasing by 1% or 2% in other years. Now, we talk also about entering into high school, how there's a change in enrollment patterns. There's more attrition going into grade 10 because students have many options available to them going into high school. But really, this is happening all the way along, right from the end of grade 1. So we see, year over year, we see a loss of students in the Spanish bilingual program. So while we might see, we might have a lot of kids in kindergarten or grade 1, starting. So for example, we can go all the way back, we can look at our history and go all the way back to 2009 when we had 391 students start in grade 1. By the time it got to grade 12, it was 117. So on average, we, about 1 in 3 students makes it from grade 1 to grade 12. So we're losing many students year over year. And that compounded with the choices, the further increases in grade 10 means that there's fewer students moving into high school by quite a large margin than start in grade 1. Now, some of the other comments also touched on, especially around Eugene Cost and Kenya Meadows about opening the second program and the increases in enrollment. Well, believe it or not, it didn't change overall enrollment that much. Prior to opening Eugene Cost, Kenya Meadows was a very full school. If there's parents here, might remember that. It was, there was, you know, almost 550 kids in the school with 120 kids, 115 to 120 kids entering in, in Kenya in grade 1. When we opened Eugene Cost and you totally enrollments between both programs, even their, their neighboring communities, and you told them enrollment between both programs, we're only getting in about 130 kids. So we're only saw an increase of about 10 kids a grade. So by the time that gets to grade 10, you know, that's only three or four more kids even with that, that second location. So I hope I've addressed the question. I know I'm a little bit rambling, but if there's any other questions of that nature, just put them in the Q and A, and I'll try to address them.
Yeah, and don't go far. The next one is also about capacity. If the enrollment in the Spanish bilingual program at Scarlet is low, how can eliminating that program make a difference? This is at 7:03, sorry, Connor. If the enrollment is low, how does eliminating that program make an impact on the capacity issues? You're on mute, Connor.
Yeah, thank you. So I addressed that a little bit in the previous slides, but we're addressing the capacity issues through a number of smaller changes. So Spanish being one of them, Woodlands, Woodbine, re-designation being one of them, as well as the move of students over to Centennial High School. So it's no one change that's, it's making all of the room we need at Scarlet. It's, it's a number of smaller changes.
Thanks, Connor. And another one. And another one, can either French, this was at 7:06, can either French or Spanish or both be relocated to Beaverbrook? Connor, I think you've touched on that. Did you have anything further to add? All right. At 7:06, do either Scenario A or B bring Dr. EP Scarlet back into the 80 to 110% utilization? Connor?
Hi, so I'd have to, I'm gonna have to pull up the, pull up my notes, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what it brings Scarlet to. So in Scenario A and B, so Scenario A brings the long-term utilization a little bit lower in Scenario B, but in both scenarios, it remains just above 100%.
Thanks Connor. And there's a question about capacity at Crescent Heights. So this will again be for you Connor. Will canceling Spanish bilingual program from EP Scarlet and moving to Crescent Heights, can Crescent Heights handle the student numbers currently in K to 9?
Short answer, yes. So long answer is, with the opening of a new North High School, there's gonna be quite a few students leaving Crescent Heights High School. There's a, there's a couple of large communities that will be exiting out, and as we shuffle, rebalance communities in the North, there's, there'll be plenty of room for Spanish at Crescent Heights into the future.
Thanks Connor. And there are some other questions about projections, and again, we encourage you to go to the story map or the PDFs. I'm actually gonna scroll back up to a question that was submitted at 6:56. Did CBE ever explore the possibility of repurposing an underutilized elementary school such as Ross Carrick Elementary School to accommodate the Spanish bilingual and other alternative programs facing elimination? Would this be a question for Danny?
Certainly. So in terms of using an elementary school to accommodate high school students, that is not a consideration that we've put forward because it would, again, go counter to what we're trying to do here, and that's to enhance the access flexibility and choice that high school students would have. And most certainly, an elementary school would not have the ability to provide such offerings, especially in the, in the, in the range of career and technology studies. But not just that, even something as simple as physical education, where the gymnasium within elementary school much more constrained. So we're trying to find a solution that we know is doable because, again, based on our projections, we'll have enough, just enough, but we'll have enough space to fill our schools up, our high schools up to 100% if we go through this effort and look at rebalancing how our students are located. And in doing so, again, giving them the opportunity to, for all students, to have those opportunities that they deserve. And then for the CBE, having added 30, almost 30 new schools over the past five years, we're principally funded on a per-student basis. And so having more buildings is not something that we're funded for. And so anytime that we can look at closing a facility like Ross Carrick School and, and the school closure that was determined in, in January of this year for the end of this school year, allows us to then redirect the funds, the monies used to operate heat, light, and maintain those buildings towards other schools. Schools that will be better, in, in a better situation to accommodate students because of the fact that, again, we're able to redirect those monies towards those schools.
Thanks Danny. We still have a few schools to move through, so we shall move on to the rest of the presentation. Back to you Connor.
Hi, thanks Deb. So Henry, we'll talk about Henry Wise Wood next. So for Henry Wise Wood, we'll see the communities listed there, Belair, Manchester, Mayfair, Meadowlark Park, Ogden, Riverbend, and Windsor Park, being redesignated from Western to Henry Wise Wood School. Well, not all from Western, but Western Canada High School is facing increasing enrollment. So they are also facing quite a bit of pressure in the coming years. So these communities that are listed there, they're actually very close to Henry Wise Wood School. Many of these students from these communities are actually within walking distance of Henry Wise Wood School. So Scenario A proposed a redesignation for both regular and the IB program, so those will be aligned into the future. As I mentioned on the Dr. EP Scarlet slide, the communities of Woodlands and Woodbine would, would be designated solely to Henry Wise Wood. And on this slide, we see the mention of International Baccalaureate capped. So the slide mentions it being capped, and I would just discuss this for a moment, just to clear, just in case there's any misconceptions, but we're not expecting there to be less spaces in IB. This comment is meant to convey that as we increase the size of the regular program at Henry Wise Wood, and it comes to, if it ever came to a point where there was concern that the school might not remain in a balanced utilization, the IB program would be the first looked at to take fewer students to maintain that balance enrollment. Henry Wise Wood will absolutely continue to have a strong IB program into the future. Scenario B at Henry Wise Wood School. So there's no change for those five communities listed there, but you know, Riverbend and Ogden would not be coming to Henry Wise Wood in this scenario. And despite, for Woodlands and Woodbine, they would continue to be designated under this scenario. Scenario B differs, that it is a proposed location for the designation of new Brighton students into the future. So Joan Cardinal Schubert, even with the recent changes in designations, is continuing to grow, and additional changes will be needed into the future. So go on to some questions about Henry Wise Wood School. Since I'm already talking, I will answer the second question first and then pass it back to Deb. So one of the comments from the Idea Board was, leave a current designated Woodlands and Woodline, Woodbine, high school boundary alone. Why not give people the option to choose if they would like to attend Wise Wood instead of automatically forcing people? So I can appreciate the flexibility and the choice that an option area brings to families and why you'd want to keep them, but the issue for Dr. EP Scarlet is that there, there's increasing enrollment pressures at the school. You know, as I said, most scenarios involve redesignated, redesignating various residential districts in one combination or another. Unfortunately, this does remove the option area for the Woodlands, Woodbine into the future. You know, it's worth noting that there are already many students who choose to attend Henry Wise Wood. In fact, more students are choosing already to go to Henry Wise Wood than Dr. EP Scarlet School. There's more students from Woodland and Woodbine at Henry Wise Wood. So the redesignation would also mean that the regular program and the IB program designations are aligned into the future, so it also has that aspect. I'll pass it back to you Deb.
Thanks Connor. And the next question from the Idea Board is for Danny. IB students from Riverbend are being moved to Henry Wise Wood from Western Canada, but the equivalent public transit option does not exist. Bus 770 from Riverbend to Western is a direct route. Going to Henry Wise Wood on the 306 takes 45 minutes.
All right. So maybe I could just start to, by saying that the CBE meets with Calgary Transit on a monthly basis, and there we share information in terms of where we believe, based on student addresses and what schools are designated to. Opportunities exist for Calgary Transit to better serve students and ideally establish express routes. Calgary Transit, of course, then takes that information. It updates their routes four times a year using the ridership data that they're actually seeing, and of course, informed by the, the data that we're providing them. And so I guess what I'm saying there is that as, you know, once an option is selected, once a scenario is selected and we're actually moving towards implementing, that would be shared with Calgary Transit for them to be able to look at potentially adjusting. Most certainly, once they start seeing the ridership changes, they would be looking at making potential changes according to what's within the, around the possible. Certainly, we look at frequently trying to find express routes when, when there's that critical mass of students moving. If there's anything else here, certainly, again, the travel guidelines that we have in place are, are for students attending the regular program, and that would be that the ride time is within an hour and only require one transfer. And so that would also be something there that, again, we would, we would look at in terms of where we're putting the most pressure on Calgary Transit. It's those routes that would be outside of those parameters. Of course, we can't speak on behalf of Calgary Transit, they are their own entity, but again, we do work very closely with them, and they are very motivated in terms of adapting the routes where there is that ridership because they're looking to, to fill their buses as well and make sure that their services are meeting the needs of Calgaryans, all of them, students as well as adults.
Thanks Danny. So the next question is from our live Q and A, and it was posted at 7:17. What is the projected cohort size at Henry Wise Wood High School for the IB program? Connor? Oh, or is that Michelle? I see both of you. Connor wins.
All right. If there's anything to add, Michelle, you can pop in after, but so right now, Henry Wise Wood is about 400, I think it's 440, 450 students in the IB program. That's full and partial IB students. That, it would remain, it wouldn't remain that size into the future. I mentioned earlier, like the slide on the capping, that was just if, if it ever came where communities were growing faster than anticipated, or we felt there was, utilization was approaching, we're getting to the high end of that balanced enrollment, that we would look at that. But it's really not a concern into the future, and I encourage you to go look at the, the story map, and you can see exactly, it's exactly projected year by year in both scenarios. So you go to the story map, scenarios, details, and maps, and then you can click on Henry Wise Wood School to see specifically.
Thanks Connor. So the next question does touch on the capping, and so Connor, you have, have spoken to that. I'll read it out, and Michelle, perhaps you could speak to the consolidation of IB. In a previous engagement, there was mention of capping IB enrollment. If this is a possibility, why would you choose to reduce the number of IB schools available for CBE students if you may need to cap IB capacity at schools like Wise Wood in the future?
So Connor already spoke to the, to the current numbers where there are, there is no capping happening in IB programs. You know, and speaking at a school like Henry Wise Wood, about a third of the students are registered in the IB program. And so there's, there's a lot of room for multiple programs within that building, and it's still quite comfortable. So in terms of the question around the why we would choose to reduce the number of IB schools, I touched on that earlier, where I talked about the importance of wide choice of courses in IB, and to have the wide choices of different programs and courses, you need to have larger numbers of students. So that's really the advantage of thinking around limiting those sites. But another component that I didn't mention earlier is that with IB, there is certainly a level of attrition that happens that you need to also consider. So we, certainly, we have all of our Grade 9 students, they're very excited, they walk into high school, this sounds amazing, I want IB and I want all of it. And then as they progress and they become a little bit more in tune to what they want for their own learning and their own interests, then they tend to maybe not take the whole diploma program, they want to maybe just take a partial program. So with that, that opens up new spots. And again, we want to be conscious of creating class sizes that are really reasonable and equitable, especially when you've got multiple programs within a building. So that's another advantage of really, you know, thinking carefully around the number of teachers that you have, because there's a lot of training that goes with IB as well, and you want to be as efficient as possible.
Thanks Michelle. And the next question was submitted at 7:18. This question is around redesignating new Brighton under Scenario B to Wise Wood. Connor, I believe that you are speaking to that when we get to Joan Cardinal Schubert, so perhaps we could put a pin in that one? And we'll move on to the next. Riverbend and Ogden, so this was at 7:21. Riverbend and Ogden move considerably in every scenario and alternative programming. Is this because the number of high school students in these areas are decreasing? Has the increase in new young families in the areas been considered? Connor?
So Riverbend and Ogden are being moved in these scenarios because of pressures at the schools they're currently at. So we have in West, as I mentioned, Western Canada High School is facing pressure, and as well as Central Memorial is facing pressure. So they're facing, they're gonna be facing pressure because Ernest Manning is facing pressure. So we have a temporarily or interim designation, and it's also in, part of this Scenario A and B solutions, is redesignating many communities who currently are Ernest Manning to Central Memorial. This is gonna create future pressure at Central Memorial. So to account for that, we are looking at adjusting the designations out of Central Memorial as well. So I think that gets to the root of the question, is why are they being moved in each scenario? And, and that's why, because pressure, future pressure on the schools they're currently at.
Okay, and perhaps you could address the next question, which is also about Riverbend. How much is the reduction in enrollment to Western Canada High School to move students from Riverbend to Henry Wise Wood? Is it worth it at all?
I can, I don't have that at my fingertips, but I can absolutely look it up. Give me a couple minutes if we move on to another question, I can come back to that.
All right. The next question is also about Riverbend, so perhaps I'll pop down to the, the one at 7:25. What is the rate of students dropping IB between Grade 10 and 12 at Wise Wood? Is it similar to other IB programs in the CBE and other programs like Spanish? Michelle?
I can certainly speak to the IB component of that question, and the rate of students that are dropping IB from Grade 10 to 12 is quite significant, and it is a theme in, in each IB high school. So, you know, I'll just give you an example of Wise Wood, I was just looking at some numbers where you have in Grade 10, and officially, I want to just clarify that the program for IB actually officially starts in Grade 11, but the intention of those Grade 10 students is to be in IB, and they're starting to take components of that IB program in Grade 10 as well, in certain cases. So they'll start like around a number of 250, but by the time they're moving into Grade 11 and Grade 12, those full diploma program students will be down around the range of 20, and then partial would be maybe about 50. So again, some of those students are finishing off their programs in Grade 11, but it does give you a theme, that there's a large number of students starting in Grade 10 and move into Grade 12, there's certainly a smaller number. And that would be across all IB high schools.
Thanks Michelle. And Connor, I see your cameras back on.
Yeah, so thanks for your patience with that one. Again, the question was, how much is the reduction in enrollment to Western Canada High School to move students from Riverbend to Henry Wise Wood? Is it worth it? So to, just for reference, so we have Riverbend- So to, just for reference, so we have Riverbend coming from, we also have them coming from, sorry, Central. So we have roughly 115 students who'd be leaving Central Memorial for Henry Wisewood. And then from Western, we have the optional boundary. So it's really Ogden is moving out of Western Canada, which is roughly about 33 students out of Western Canada to Henry Wisewood.
Thanks, Connor. And I think we will be moving on to the next school. So Connor, back to you.
Yes, thanks, Deb. So Joan Cardinal Schubert. We've covered most of these changes on the previous, sorry, we've covered some of these, the New Brighton change already. So Scenario A for Joan Cardinal Schubert maintains the current interim designation with the communities above. So Douglasdale, Douglas Glen, McKenzie Lake and McKenzie Town, going to Lord Beaverbrook High School. So as mentioned during the Henry Wisewood slides, Joan Cardinal Schubert High School, even with the recent changes in designations, is continuing to grow and additional changes will be needed into the future. So I would note that in Scenario A, the designation for Lord, for New Brighton is Lord Beaverbrook. So the reason we have Lord Beaverbrook in Scenario A and then we have Henry Wisewood in Scenario B is to give choice, to give a, you know, to give a difference in scenarios. So we would like to hear your feedback, notes in Scenario A versus Scenario B for redesignation in New Brighton. I would also note that the New Brighton change isn't effective with the rest of these changes, but it'll actually go into effect a little later. Again, I refer you to those story map projections. Enrollment growth at Joan Cardinal Schubert is happening year over year, and we won't need to look at moving New Brighton until 2025. A little bit on Scenario B. The difference between Scenario B is that the community in New Brighton would be re-designated to Henry Wisewood in this scenario. So there's a question, some idea board questions that came through for Henry Wisewood and Joan Cardinal Schubert. So the question was, I'll just pull it up here. And the essence was, in essence, was the Copperfield and New Brighton students should be kept together regardless of which school they attend. They have spent five years together in middle school and have forged friendships. So that came up a couple of times on the idea board. And the rationale for that one was to keep, essentially just to keep as many students as close to home as possible and ensure that all available space was at Joan Cardinal Schubert High School was used into the future. So, you know, in a high school in an area, you know, where there's not other high schools, they're serving all that kind of southeast area, it would be to maximize the use of the space at Joan Cardinal into the future. So that's, that's the reason we would be keeping Copperfield designated there.
Thanks, Connor. And then to address the transportation questions, Danny Breton?
Certainly. And I can certainly see, and we heard this, of course, back in the fall of 2019, how transportation is important. And most definitely, it was a strong consideration when we were developing these scenarios. So the transportation question for New Brighton spoke about how the community would be too long from New Brighton, making it hard for students to have time for outside activities, jobs and homework. Closer communities would make more sense. So of course, one of the challenges that we did have is that the reason many of these schools are full is because of the, of how the communities around them have lots of students, have lots of children that are either at that age or coming to that age or they'll be entering high school. Whereas, of course, the population around some of our other high schools isn't quite there. It used to be at some point in time when those schools were built. But the city has grown, it's, it's spread out. And so they no longer have that population. And so now in wanting to respect what we heard, and that was, you know, one of the things was to keep students as close as possible, it does mean that for those schools that were especially full, the communities immediately around those schools typically immediately filled up the schools. And sometimes we're talking about just those within the walk zone. And so that means that those communities are just a little bit outside of that periphery. They do have to end up driving by that closer high school, but that, that closer high school being full with all of the even closer communities so that they can attend another high school, one where there isn't that same density of students. And so yes, we recognize that it does make for a longer trip. As I indicated previously, we do meet with Calgary Transit on a monthly basis. They do update their routes four times a year. They do look also at ridership data. And of course, given that the Education Act does provide a mandate to school jurisdictions to provide transportation for students that are attending their designated regular program school. And I'll repeat that again, it's for their designated regular program school. If we were to find upon selecting a scenario that students are not able to meet, I should say Calgary Transit is not able to meet the CBE guidelines of no more than one hour and one bus transfer, then we would consider a possibility of establishing Yellow School Bus Service until such time as Calgary Transit would be able to provide that service.
Thanks, Danny. And the next question was posted at 7:37. And I believe it is more around Spanish bilingual. We live in New Brighton and currently being told we have to send our kids who are in Spanish bilingual that they have to go elsewhere. Now, if we send them to the New Brighton designated school, they are right back there in the southwest. Has anyone thought about this? And no green line? So as a designation question, Connor, I think you've addressed some of the rationale around the redesignations. But if you have anything to add, please go ahead. All right. So we are waiting. Oh, here we go. There is another question for Joan Cardinal Schubert, posted at 7:39. What kind of changes may be made in the future to Joan Cardinal? My concern is in the next four years, when my kids will need their community high school, Joan Cardinal will be too full. The schools in Auburn Bay are full and growing. I feel like there will be a lot of pressure on Joan Cardinal, even more so with our option of our Spanish high school being moved or eliminated. Connor, did you want to start that one off? And then perhaps you can pass it to an edge queue.
Sure, I can start that. So the changes we're planning for Joan Cardinal Schubert, again, are listed in the story map. It's all kind of, we've started those changes already with that interim designation. And as a result of this high school engagement, there'll be more permanent redesignation. So the additional changes we're talking about is that New Brighton piece and re-designated them in 2025. So the concern was, with the other question was around Spain. At the end of the question, I believe, was the school is, the school in Auburn Bay is going to be growing. And I feel like there will be a lot of pressure on Joan Cardinal, even more so with our option of Spanish bilingual being moved or eliminated. So this has been accounted for, actually, and in Scenario B, and we've assumed that those students would return to their home area schools. And, you know, currently, Spanish bilingual from the, there are people who are in Joan Cardinal Schubert boundary taking Spanish bilingual, there's very few. So there's, I think, all told, it's about 20 students, K to 12, that are currently attending Spanish bilingual from those communities. So while it does have an effect long-term, like long-term at Joan Cardinal Schubert, it's minimal. So that would be roughly two kids a grade from those communities. I'm just going to confirm that number for you right now. But that's what I was looking at it earlier. It is a few more than that in the lower grades. But in the, sorry, it was about 20 students, 10 to 12. So it's, it's some, but not that many. And it has been accounted for in that Scenario B projection with those programs being eliminated. It's hard to know for Scenario A exactly how many would continue on versus stay at the school. So there was some account made for that, but it was a little bit easier in Scenario A where everyone would be returning. So hopefully that helps answer your question.
Great. Thanks, Connor. And I see no further questions about Joan Cardinal Schubert. So Connor, we can move on to the next school.
Lord Beaverbrook, Scenario A. So we've covered most of these changes on the previous Joan Cardinal Schubert slides. But there is one additional change we haven't covered yet, and that is the discontinuation of our centered learning program at Lord Beaverbrook High School. So there'd be no new students registered for the 2022 school year, but those remaining in the program who'd be grade 11 and 12 would be able to finish our centered learning in that program at Lord Beaverbrook. And for Scenario B, so Scenario B would have Ogden and Riverbend re-designated to Lord Beaverbrook. Ogden is moved because of the previously mentioned future space at Western Canada High School. And Riverbend is moved, again, because of the space concerns at Central Memorial. Now, again, similar to New Brighton, we have given an option. So for Scenario A and B, they're different. They're not, Ogden and Riverbend have different, there's different opportunities in Scenario A and B for these communities. And that's that for Lord Beaverbrook. So I would go to now invite any questions and pass it back to you, Deb.
Thanks, Connor. So we'll just pause a moment for any questions about Lord Beaverbrook to come in. All right. It doesn't seem that there are any questions for Lord Beaverbrook. So we'll move now to other questions or comments. And so I have been recording some that we didn't get to earlier on in, in the session. So I am scrolling all the way up to 6:50. And there were a few at 6:50. It's the first one submitted at 6:50. Could the low number of Spanish students this past year be due to students in the hub? Connor?
So I, I kind of questioning the low numbers. I mean, I mentioned that enrollment has been pretty stable over this, the last few years. But Spanish bilingual enrollment this year isn't down, you know, significantly compared to other areas in the CBE. So CBE is seeing a decline across, especially our elementary schools and the kindergarten program in particular. So we've seen decline there. But, you know, grade to grade in the Spanish bilingual program, it, it hasn't been that different from any other of the year for, for Spanish bilingual.
Deb, if I could just add. So I, I understand the question associating offering hub and offering face-to-face. And is that the question regarding enrollment? But the enrollment numbers used during this engagement are for all of our students. So it's not simply including our students that are face-to-face.
Thanks, Darlene. And don't go far because I think the next question is for you as well, Darlene. So this was posted at 6:46 this evening. How does the CBE hope to maintain trust with families when programs that students have committed to can be just canceled or relocated to a place where students cannot access it?
And so anytime we have to make any kind of a change once we've started one of our alternative programs, these changes don't come easily. And having to face the realities of our space, the realities of our budget, our resources, both people resources and how easy it is to access materials for student learning, these are all parts of our reality. And so knowing that making a decision such as this is not one that comes easily or that we take lightly. When we began any of our language alternative programs, the desire is always to see them through to grade 12. I know I mentioned earlier that with some of our alternative programs and specifically language, so our Mandarin bilingual program ends at the grade nine level. However, we do have high schools that offer Mandarin at the grade 10, 11 and 12 level. It's not the Mandarin program, but it's a continuation of language. When, when we think of it in that regard, right? Although it's not the best scenario or perhaps our preferred scenario, it is our reality. And so it's not with the intent to ever break trust, but just as families face the constraints and realities of their households and have to live within those means, although we're a large organization, we also are, are committed to having to do that. So that's why we are offering the scenario of one option is to continue in one location that has the available space going into the, currently and going into the future. Or to offer an alternative way of students being able to continue in the program at various locations throughout the city.
Thanks, Darlene. And Connor, the next question is for you. It was posted at 7:45. What happens to centennial numbers if the Spanish bilingual program children move on to high school? I'm assuming back to their regular program high school, which could be centennial.
So I think I kind of, when I was talking about Joan Cardinal Schubert, the same, a lot of the same principles would apply at centennial. So right now, students who access the Spanish bilingual program are kind of spread through many of our high school catchment areas. You know, some of them will return to Scarlet, some of them will return to Centennial, some of them will return to Joan Cardinal Schubert, et cetera. So with that in mind, those students will kind of get spread over the many high schools in the south. So there will be, especially in Scenario B where there's a discontinuation of the program, there will be a slightly higher utilization at those schools. But it's not enough to impact or change the scenarios. In fact, they are included in, in the scenarios.
Thanks, Connor. And there's a question. And there's a question here just for a reiteration of the path to finding the enrollment numbers on the story map. Do you have that at your fingertips, Connor?
Yes, I can link you to the story map. So I'm going to respond in the Q and A. I'll just link the story map directly.
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't reply to your question, I just kind of posted my own. But if you go to that link on the story map, and then you click on scenarios, details, and maps, it's a tab right near the top, your fifth tab. You can then click on the left side, there's a kind of table of contents, and you can pick the school you're interested in.
Thanks, Connor. And there is a question about the arts program. Is the arts program underutilized? Connor, can you speak to the projections with regards, or the enrollment numbers that we've seen with regards to art-centered learning?
Sure, I can speak a little bit to that. So I'll speak specifically to Lord Beaverbrook, since we know we're still kind of on that with those slides. Lord Beaverbrook, the arts program used to be a lot more subscribed than it is today. Back in 2011, there was about 230 kids who were in an art-centered learning program. And since then, those numbers have declined quite a bit. And especially with the opening of Joan Cardinal Schubert, we found that students didn't make the choice to continue in the art-centered learning program. A lot of them did come from those southeast communities to attend Lord Beaverbrook for arts. And they dropped from, like I said, about 230 in 2011 to 50 in 2018 and 2019. There's been a small uptick this year. Again, I think probably because some of those southeast communities are now designated to Beaverbrook. So they're seeing the arts as an option, but it has, it has dropped a lot since its inception.
Thanks, Connor. Now we'll move on to some closing remarks and next steps.
Thanks, Deb. So there were some excellent questions brought forward here this evening. But it's important to remember that there are other ways for you to share your perspectives as well. So the idea boards will be available until March 17. If you have some additional thoughts or questions not captured here tonight that you'd like us to consider. And I really want to emphasize that it's very important that everyone complete the online surveys. So there's the parent survey, but there's also the student survey. So if you can encourage your children to complete the student survey as well, if they haven't already, the student voice is very important in this process, and we want to make sure that we have their thoughts captured. So everything is available on the high school engagement page on our website. So for example, questions about the story map, the link to the story map resides there, as well as other information about the high school scenarios that you can review. In terms of next steps, we will be posting a recording of this session on our website, and that should be available tomorrow. So if anyone wasn't able to attend this evening and they want to watch that, they're welcome to do so. Following this phase of engagement on scenarios, we will be working on, we'll be reviewing all of the feedback on the scenarios, and then working on the proposed plan, which will be shared for feedback in either June or September. As mentioned before, this, this proposed plan may be a blend of scenarios A and B. We'll look through the information by program as well as by communities and evaluate what the feedback is telling us, and then develop the proposed plan from there. We really appreciate your active participation in this process. We recognize that change is never easy, and we all have different perspectives and experiences that we bring to these discussions. The diversity of voices and views makes for a rich and robust discussion. And so I want to thank you for taking the time to share your thoughts, and we hope you will continue to be involved throughout this process. Enjoy the rest of your evening, and good night.